Good morning, welcome to our Franklin County Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, April 25th. Roll call please.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Renaud?
Present.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would, please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance followed by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County Commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. Let us pray. O Creator of all our days, you have given us time to live and time to discover the meaning of our lives. May we make good use of the time you have given us to experience and express the depth of our love. May we enhance each day as a gift from the Holy Spirit, something sacred and special, a day designed for renewed resolve, a day to overcome our fears and reach out to someone, a day to stretch our faith by trying something new, a day to play with children, visit an older person, hug a friend, a day to do something unexpected, something generous and kind, a day to reconcile a longstanding grudge, to forgive and let go. And Lord God, on this day, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for the opportunity that we have together to be about the business about this county. God, I pray for the Commissioners that you might grant them wisdom, that you might grant them understanding, and that they might serve you well as they serve this county well. God, we give you thanks for the business at hand and pray that your hand will be upon it. We give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to Correspondence and Organizational Business. Derek? Nothing? Okay, Public Comment. Do we have anybody signed up for the comment? Consent Agenda today. Consider the Commission meeting minutes for April 18th and consider and approve a tax change order in the amount of a negative $26.88.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Okay, our first item of business will be consider the waiving of dump fees for the Old Mary River Run Car Show. Morning, Don.
I know here lately, basically on issues like this, you kind of want to have some facts and figures and numbers of what's actually going on and what's happening with the organizations that you guys do help support. So I went back and dug out, it was a tourism evaluation done in 2015, and this comes right out of the Ottawa Herald. And in 2015, you have to remember, the numbers are bigger now because we have added Friday Night and some other things we've added to the show to enhance it. But this was from 2015. And yeah, there was a study done, and it, business sales for the Franklin County for that two-day weekend was estimated at $966,000 during the car show weekend. There was a total sales tax brought in that weekend of $44,765 in Franklin County. There was, that weekend, there was 639 rooms rented out, which transit tax figured out to close to $4,000 in transit tax for that weekend. And like I said, we have expanded it now. We have going Friday night, and the city is graciously in the Theater Center Auditorium down there, provide a band and everything for Friday night, provide that to the car show, which has enhanced it, and it does add up to another $1,000. We do a 50-50 pot that goes towards nonprofit organizations in Franklin County. Last year it was mustard or dystrophy. And then we have a 50-50 pot on Saturday and Sunday that goes towards nonprofits and for college money for kids going to school off in and up someplace else other than Franklin County. Okay, what we got is, just a little background, Car Club is made up of 30 different families. There's some, two or three of the families that's been there for the full 32 years the car show's been in existence. The first show had 45 cars. Last year was almost 2,100 cars. There was talk of dropping it back, trying to hold it at 2,000, just to cut down on the problems of trying to that demand, but it was voted on not to do that this year. We're going to keep trying and see what it does. We have made a few concessions narrowing down the participants, and we're going to wait and see how that turns out. We did donate last year $10,000 to students, like I said, going off to colleges, kids from Franklin County. We donated over $10,000 to nonprofits like Heart Association, Cancer Association, and several other organizations. Costs us somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 before the first car shows up to the show for us to put it together year to year. And what I'm doing here today is asking what you have done a lot of years in the past as the use of the courthouse lawn for that Saturday night for downtown, waive the landfill fees, which you guys have done for years on that also. And I just want permission to talk to Alan. I know he's let us use the tower light, emergency light downtown. We do rent, well, we can't get our hands on like the counties. And the other thing, you guys started last year, was sponsoring the trolley that runs downtown from the car show. And we did have talked to a lot of the downtown Main Street Association, and they think that's doubled and tripled their business for that weekend downtown by having that trolley, taking people downtown all day long, back and forth, and that was $800. And just here today to answer any questions that you might have for me and make that request, and I have been involved with the car show for, it's my 19th year. So just here today to ask the Commissioners for, hopefully for your continued support.
Okay. So we're looking for waiving the dump fees, use of the courthouse lawn, use of the emergency light tower, and approval for sponsoring the downtown trolley. Think that $800 will be about similar to that?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. We've already reserved for it and paid for it. We just would ask for reimbursement if we can, because I have to do a lot of those things. If you don't do them a year ahead of time, you don't get, don't get them reserved.
I think we all realize how important the car show is for both the city and the county, the economy, and what it brings to us. So if there's no other statements or questions, I'd make the motion to approve those.
Okay, I have a motion for all those four things.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yep. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, guys. And we hopefully, like I said, this is 32nd year, and hopefully there's number 33, so.
All righty.
And you guys get the new motel opened out there. I didn't mention that, but usually we fill up, they tell us all the rooms for 30-mile radius. So I think the other counties, the more we do like that, the more we can keep right here in Franklin County, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item then is receipt report of the 2017 audit. Rodney?
Good morning. I should have two letters there. I might look at one of those first, the one that says Internal Control Communication at the top. As part of our audit, we have to look at your internal control system and see that it's functioning properly and it's structured properly to allow people to detect errors in their normal courses of doing business and get them corrected like they should. And we had a slight issue come up. There's some grant payments that get wired in from the state to the Health Department. Some of them go to the Health Fund, some go to the Special Health Fund. Once in a while they get put in the wrong place because they don't know where they're at when they first come in, then they have to modify it later. The problem is, when they get corrected, they're being expensed out of the fund they were put in rather than taken back out of the revenue account. And that inflates transactions on that, like the Health Fund. And in 2017, that was almost $133,000 more revenue and expense in the fund than it's actually there. So when your department looks at her budget report, she thinks she spent a lot more budget than she really has. The correct way to do is to, if it's in the wrong revenue account, you take it back out of that account and then put it where it belongs. And I've talked to the clerk's office and the treasurer's office about that. They're aware, they agree that's a problem, and they're going to work on correcting that. But since that's such a large amount, I have to consider that a material weakness in your internal control. So I had to make a separate report just for that. That's what this, that's what this letter is describing here. But it should be corrected. Next year it shouldn't be a problem. The other letter you have there is just several items that we're required to put in writing to you every year. It's the same letter you got the last several years. We didn't have any disagreements with the management. There were no significant issues during your audit, any, you know, any problems or anything. In looking at the county's financial condition, you're in pretty good shape. I looked at your 2018 budget and see what we planned on carrying over versus what you're actually carrying over, and all your funds are well above what you're planning on carrying over. The only fund that's not is the phone system fund. It's about $10,000 less than we planned on, so you need to keep an eye on that one this year. If you're going to have any unusual expenditures in there, you may watch the cash on that.
Which fund was that?
The phone system.
Okay.
But all your other funds are in great shape. Your debt's getting a little high, I mean, you're probably aware of that. You're going to issue more bonds on the industrial part later this year, I understand. That's going to get you close to $30 million outstanding debt, which is quite a bit. But you're able to make your payments, your bond levy's staying pretty steady, so so far it's all right, just something to keep an eye on. We did have two funds that were in the red last year. One's the Jail Trust Fund. It was like $2,400 in the red. That's the fund that's administered by the Sheriff's Office. They just spent more than was in there. It's been corrected since the end of the year. The other one's the Idaho Bank Repair Project. There's been $90,000 spent out of that fund, but no revenue's come in over the last two years. And I talked to Jim about this. There's some state money coming here in the next few weeks, hopefully, that'll cover about half of that, and then he's going to put the rest over from Road and Bridge to cover, to get it out of the red. We haven't done that yet because we don't know the exact amount yet. So for now, it's just in the red at the end of the year, but it will be corrected here As far as the budget law goes, there are four funds that were over budget. One is the Hospital Sales Tax Fund, and that's the money you get from sales tax, you funnel through the hospital, it just, the budget wasn't high enough to cover how much you got. So it should have been amended. I think in the future, I'd just bump it up more than you think it's going to be just to cover it. The Risk Management Reserve Fund was over budget, but it's exempt because it's probably not a budgeted fund. It's a reserve fund. But for whatever reason, there was a budget adopted on it, so we have to show that it was over budget. But I've got to note in here that it was exempt, so. The Centropolis Thorough District Fund was over budget $79. That's just nothing you can do there. And the Solid Waste Fund was over budget $54,000. And that's been, two years in a row, they've been over budget. That's the one to keep an eye on. Your cash is fine, it's just maybe you need to raise the budget. If you look in November and see what funds are getting close, do a budget amendment hearing and no problem. In your policy manual, it states that employees get a chance for a 2.5% raise on their anniversary date. In actuality, elected officials are getting that on the date that they took office. It's not necessarily their anniversary date when they're hired. So you might want to consider rewording that policy a little bit to be how you're actually doing it, in case a problem come up later. It's not a big deal, but something to look at. We were talking about the phone system earlier. The Extension Council and CASA aren't paying their bills timely. In the last few years, they've been behind a couple of months here and there, and now this year, they're behind quite a bit. At the end of 2017, the Extension Council owes nine months, it looks like, and CASA owes for about seven months. I don't know if their problem is they're not getting a bill or they just aren't paying it, but somebody needs to follow up on that and make sure they're getting, it's not a lot of dollars, but they ought to be paying what they owe. And the other thing we've got, the Sheriff has a Law Enforcement Trust Fund where they account for forfeiture proceeds that they get. There's also a Sheriff Trust Fund, which was set up for one special case several years ago. I think it's pretty well been spent. And there's also a DEU forfeiture Fund. In my mind, those three could all be combined into one fund, just to cut down the confusion. They're the same purpose, they're administered by the same people, as far as I know. You might give some thought to considering those, just closing those all together into one fund, cut down on the number of funds you have. That's just a suggestion. Other than that, the audit went fine. People do a great job. We like working with them. We try to stay out of the way as much as we can, let them do their job when they're here, you know, but it's great working with them. If you have any questions, I'd like to, I'd be sure happy to answer them for you.
Any questions in for Rodney?
When he mentioned the phone fund, I think we were able to find some efficiencies there with billing, so that should, rather than have to raise the amount we spend, we can just spend less, so in the future, we'll be good there.
Yeah, and Rodney and Janet and I have all sat down and had a meeting about this, and really, there's nothing here that I find of great concern. I mean, solid waste, as you all know, has been an issue, but we've got new leadership there, and we're very optimistic about the direction that's going moving forward. Yeah, and everything else are just the things we need to kind of fix along the way, but I, yeah, I mean, I'm fairly pleased with how the audit went this year, all things considered, so.
And like you said, everything that we've talked about, I discussed with them back when I was doing the audit, and there was nothing that...
Part of solid waste too would be our reimbursements we receive from recyclables, which is market-based, so that could...
Right, and we put those in as revenue. We don't put them in on the reimbursement side because they're not technically a reimbursement because we're selling something to get income. So when we put that in as an income and not as reimbursements, then it changes how the budget looks. So the more we take in and sell, the more money we make, but technically, I mean, it's commodities, so pricing fluctuates and we might not get what we hope. But, you know, we take that in and we have to send it out. It costs us more to have it and send it out, but then we get the money back in the long run. We just didn't make the adjustment for...
And your landfill fees were probably higher this year too than they have been in the past.
Piled store.
Which cost more to haul it off, so that, you know, reaches your expenses. There's not a problem, just look in at November and see how close you are, and maybe amend the budget. Have a hearing is not a big deal. There's no tax money involved there, so.
We, we had a significant amount when I looked in it in November, but like Rodney said, when we're bringing more in and we have to haul more out, those bills are higher than we expect them to be, and it changes it.
Anything else, question? All right.
Do you have a, if you want to entertain a contract for next year's audit, I'd be happy to talk about that too. I have one with me if you'd like.
Derek?
Yeah, we've utilized Rodney, and Rodney's done a good job. I think what I would like is, I don't doubt that it's the same contract, but I, this would be the first I've seen it. I would like to review it, and then I'm happy to get it back. And I would recommend that we continue using Rodney, certainly provided the contract looks okay. If I could have a week to look at that, I'd probably bring it back next week for execution and...
Are we doing one-year contracts or three?
We renew every year.
yearly?
And the price this year is the same as last year. We're not asking for any increases.
Yeah, I feel just leave that then with Derek. We'll do that, and if there's no other questions, why, thanks very much for your report. Appreciate the work you were doing, working with our county people.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rodney.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider approval, the fiscal year 2019, Department of Corrections Community Corrections Audit, our adult budget, comprehensive plan and funding considerations. Allison?
Good morning.
Thank you for your 100 pages worth of documents to read.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I was hoping that it wouldn't be printed multiple times, so that way we could save some trees. Today, I am before you in regards to our adult comprehensive plan and budget. On an annual basis, the Kansas Department of Corrections requires each of the 31 judicial districts to have approval by an advisory board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners regarding the budgets and the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, it addresses different items regarding current resources that we're using, programs, gaps, and delivery of the services that we have, as well as the objectives and outcomes that our agency has. In fiscal year 19, we were informed that the budget would be $449,602.78 for our adult program. This is a 5% reduction, or around $24,000, from what we received last year. And so in the budget, it outlines the agency operations, categories regarding travel, administrative and direct service costs that we have, client services, and so, and some of the things also in there have to do with enhancement of our cognitive programming that we do currently. So are there any questions about our adult budget?
I just have, one of them in one of the, one of the boxes that was marked is a choice between residential, and the other one was like ACIS or something like that. What does that stand for?
So AISP is Adult Intensive Supervised Probation.
Okay.
There was a tab regarding residential. There's only one county, Franklin County, that has a residential center for adults, and so that one only applies for Johnson County.
Okay. Then I think there was another one in there that was like LSIR or something, was it in this document or another document? I don't know.
Yeah, so inside the comprehensive plan, every judicial district in the state of Kansas uses a tool called an LSIR, and what that stands for is Level of Service Inventory Revised. It's a risk needs assessment that we complete upon initial and reassessed whilst a person is on probation. And it looks at different areas of risk and need that they have, and that's how we develop case plans with, individualized case plans with each one of our clients.
Okay. And then one final question was, I noticed on your board, some of the vacancies, are there a certain number has to come from each county?
There is not in our bylaws. It doesn't address that it has to come from a certain county, but we do need to have representation in all of our counties. And one thing recently that I have done is, and I'm getting ready to secure a spot for a sheriff being on there, I've reached out to a lot of the police chiefs, as well as the sheriff's office, and then also some different community citizens to join our board.
And I just wanted to let you know that I think any of us or anybody else would help you find people, if there are certain specific criteria, like you said, the sheriff, we would certainly be glad to help you with that if there's anything that you thought, you know, a certain category that you didn't have that...
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, we would certainly do that. Okay, any other questions for Allison on this one? Okay. I want to make a motion then to approve the adult budget.
Make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 Kansas Department of Corrections, Community Corrections Behavioral Health Budget and Behavioral Health Grant, the amount of $107,441.44.
One on one.
Cool.
Yeah, one on the one on the, the 449 one.
Sorry. The dollar. Read what's in front of me. Wanted to get it right. Where we at?
Ah, here you go.
So this is the motion to approve the 2019 Kansas Department of Corrections, Community Corrections Adult Budget Comprehensive Plan and Funding Considerations in the amount of $449,602.78. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. I get rewired there, okay.
I do have a lot of items today, so I apologize.
I was lying off.
Yeah, you're ready to go. We're, we're good for the next one now. All right, Allison, let's see, our next agenda item then is the, the Behavioral Health Grant.
Correct. In fiscal year 19, the Kansas Department of Corrections has allotted for $3 million to go towards behavioral health for the state of Kansas. And so our judicial district has requested these funds for the last four years, and what those funds are for are interventions that we do, referrals for cognitive education, mental health services, substance abuse services, as well as medication management and referrals for different sex offender treatments that are available. In our, in our judicial district, we decided to focus on two specific areas of addressing behavioral health needs for mental health and substance abuse, which we have an in-house clinician from Elizabeth Clayton Center that services only our clients, both Community Corrections and court services. We've extended that out to help with the continuum of services for the county criminal justice system. And then also funds providing behavioral, I'm sorry, batter's intervention programming in which Family Peace Initiative comes and works with clients that are required by the court to complete that program. And so this year, we are, we are requesting the amount of $107,441.44, as I stated, that will help with the cost of having one mental health clinician in-house at Community Corrections that provides services, as well as providing funds for if a client would like to go elsewhere and help cover those costs. As we know, sometimes cost barriers keep people from reaching out for mental health. So I did want to give you a little blip on this. As of July of 2017 until now, we've serviced 178 clients through our care coordination, so they're getting mental health services, and up to 418 sessions in which they're getting those. And on our batter's intervention program, we have serviced since July of last year 64 participants, and of that, we've had 10 completions.
Okay. Anybody have a question on the grant?
So this is just basically proven to request this grant money, correct?
Correct.
408, one full-time person, 408...
Sessions.
Sessions.
Yeah.
That's about two a working day, or they do it...
So yeah, so the, the clinical hour is, mental health, they do a little bit different, but yes, that's about two a day. One of the things that she's also doing is she's doing coordinating services, so the sessions are focused on mental health or substance abuse. She's currently getting her certification to be able to do substance abuse, which is a large help with the population that we're serving.
Sure.
When will you know about the grant? Final being applied, or is it just something we fill out and you will get the grant?
No, it, hopefully, we'll, we'll know soon, but last year, the funds that we requested were cut by 20, about 20,000, and so it could be all the way up until June 30th. July 1 is when our funding is released.
Right, okay.
Is that $3 million divvied up equally to go out to judicial districts?
It's not, and not ever judicial district requests, this isn't a special grant that we write in order for us to obtain those. It's, it's been addressed as a need in our district, and as I stated, we've done it for four years because one of the things that we encounter with the clients that we serve is they don't have the financial means to be able to get those services. And so if we can help with alleviating that, that's something we, we do partition for. So I will say, we've requested over $100,000 each year.
Well, I'd be happy to make this motion again.
Okay.
Motion to approve fiscal year 2019 Kansas Department of Community Corrections Corrections Behavioral Grant Budget and Behavioral Grant, the amount of $107,441.44.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes. Okay, Allison, consider for approval, the 2019 Department of Corrections, Junile Justice Conference and Plan Grant Application.
Similarly to our adult grant, we also have to apply for funds and write a comprehensive plan regarding the programming that we do here in our judicial district. In fiscal year 19, we have received flat funding regarding those programs, and so we are requesting for approval of $345,063 regarding that, as well as $39,507.40 for our action programming. So in, in what you have before you, it outlines the different programs our agency has. Included in this is juvenile intake, in which they help with the, of course, Juvenile Detention Center helps with the juvenile intake we have. We have Drug Court, we have Turency Court, and then we have our own programming, which is the Juvenile Intensive Supervised Probation. Are there any questions about that?
Questions for Allison on the two grants? Let's see, yeah, two different ones there, aren't there on those?
So you've already received notice that you'll be receiving those two grants.
Correct. Correct.
So what is our motion, just basically to accept those grants?
All right, I'd be happy to make motion, uh, for approval of acceptance of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, Kansas Department of Corrections, uh, Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan, uh, conditions of grant for juvenile services, and, uh, juvenile services budget in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renout.
Yes. Okay, Allison, how about the, consider for approval of the, uh, quarterly adjustment for Community Corrections, Adult and Juvenile Services?
Last item on the agenda. Um, we are, um, one of the, the things that we do, and this isn't, uh, commonly done quarterly, but we have, um, a need for implementing some new, um, equipment in our office. And so, um, I've put together, um, in order for me to do that, I have to have approval by the advisory board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners, to be able to take funds from one of the categories and place into another category. And so that is what is before you. Um, on the adult side, it's amount of seventeen thousand, and on the juvenile service budget, services budget, it's seven thousand, twenty, two hundred.
What are you doing with it?
Um, we are, a couple of the items that we're doing is new equipment, uh, computers, um, we, in that particular category, we lack funds for us to be able to do that, though we have a need. Um, we're also looking at the purchasing of a new vehicle. Um, we do have some aging vehicles that are causing some maintenance, maintenance issues, and then office equipment.
Okay. Any other questions for Allison on this one? These are all in your budget, correct?
Correct.
Have to make motion for approval of quarterly adjustments for, uh, Community Corrections Adult Budget, the amount of seventeen thousand, and the juvenile services budget in the amount of seventy-two hundred. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Renout.
Yes. Thank you, Allison. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is to revisit the community partners' capital funding for two thousand nineteen, and the approval of transferring eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars of ad valorem funding from the pledge made to the Historical Society to the Frank County Conservation District. Derek?
Yeah, this is something you all are very familiar with. Several of you reached out to me and asked me, um, uh, effectively to get creative and try to find funding outside of ad valorem taxation that we could provide to our community partners. Um, one source of funding is obviously the transient guest tax. We do have a couple of community partners that are eligible to receive TGT funds. One of them is the Historical Society, and so I reached out to their executive director and asked her, uh, if she would be comfortable with us lowering our ad valorem contribution to her if we then replaced it with TGT funds, because they, they're eligible to receive those, whereas the Conservation District really isn't. Or we'd have to get awfully creative to get the Conservation District TGT funds. So it would make more sense this way. Uh, we have the funding to do it. And this item here is just asking, kind of similar to what we did at our original, uh, meeting with community partners. It's basically pledging this eleven thousand dollars to the Conservation District pending approval of the final budget, which we won't have for several months.
Would you revisit with us, uh, or at least for myself, the amount that we had like a couple weeks ago, a month ago, we had talked about pledging? And by adding eleven thousand, six eighty-seven, that would take us to what number then?
I think that will meet the exact amount they requested.
Okay.
Yes, that will take them to forty-five thousand.
Okay, okay.
So this, this should get the Conservation District exactly what they asked for, and it will lead to an overall increase in what we've given our community partners this year, provided you then turn around and, and supplement the Historical Society with TGT funds, which is what the next item on our agenda asks.
And the Historical Society does have an ad valorem tax line item specific for them?
Yeah, a- and they're still receiving.
That, that, right. That won't be changed then.
It won't.
No, it's just that above and beyond that, what we had done. And the other, this eleven thousand will be replaced with transient guest tax.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
I would just say that our mill rate continues to climb. Over the last couple decades, it's up more than twenty percent. Uh, that's, I guess if we're gonna get serious about having a positive impact on property taxes, we have to manage spending and make tough decisions about what we're willing to continue doing into the future and what's absolutely necessary. So, um, I mean, I think doing this pretty much just sidesteps a tough decision, but, um, so I won't, I won't be, uh, voting to affirm it, but, uh, I'd just say property taxes are a real problem. We need to be ready to make tough decisions about, um, managing spending going forward.
And, and one thing, and I, I guess whether to discuss it with this item or the next item, um, I don't believe that this is a, a long-term, sustainable model for us. I think we can do it this year, but I don't think leveraging TGT funds, which by their nature are very, uh, unpredictable, is a good idea. And so, um, doing this this year i- isn't, in my opinion, taking the board off the hook for next year. I think, um, there will need to be decisions made. Um, we're going through our budget process right now, and yesterday, we finished up the last of our budget meetings with our department heads and electeds. And we're budgeting for almost a five hundred thousand dollar increase in employee benefits. That is all under a tax lid of one and a half percent. Um, you know, I, I, I believe that busts our tax lid in and of itself. So in order for us to continue doing that, we have to find efficiencies elsewhere. And if you guys wanna continue to fund community partners above what they're asking or at that level, then I think we're gonna have to be ready to cut our core services at the county, whether that's insurance for our employees, whether that's equipment for gym, and then our roads don't get fixed as fast. I mean, that's a decision that you all are gonna have to make, and I can assure you, Janet and I will present you with your options. But this is just where we're at right now, and certainly, uh, we all wish it was different. But, um, but for this year, this is a, you know, this is a replacement that hopefully makes everyone happy, so.
Well, I feel like we can do this. We have the money and the TGT to, to do this for two thousand nineteen, and then I think we can take a lot harder look at all the community partners in the future than what we, we have before. I think that all of them may have to help with this, not just one or two.
Well, and, and certainly, I would take any feedback that you can give me in terms of if you all, I guess I thought we gave you ample time to take a hard look at the community partners this year. If there's something I can do to give you more info, we've discussed. I think I'm gonna request that each partner come in and, and walk us through an entire year's budget so that we can see exactly what the money that we contribute is being spent on. I'll use the Conservation District for example, you know, the correspondence that they've sent us and that they've come and discussed several times. I mean, it makes it sound like this twelve thousand dollar cut, they weren't gonna be able to provide any services. And so that makes me wonder, what were they gonna do with their other funding, because they, I mean, they're spending it on something. And so that's just a question I've had throughout this, is not just for them, but with all of our partners. Literally, how is the money that we are giving them being spent? And I think next year, I will ask that all of them make that presentation so that we know, and then you all can decide, okay, is this how we want the tax dollars being spent? So, but beyond that, if there's something else I can do, please let me know.
Guess I don't understand, you know, to say that, uh, when we get a little more time and we can sit down and dig into this, we're really gonna make a tough decision and actually do what we're here for. Well, that's the process, that's what we did. Everyone was here and had a chance to, on an equal plane, felt explain what they did, what their needs are, how, I mean, that is the process. I, I don't know, um, time to do that's during the budget. This is the budget. We have time, we have people that'll go out and find us any information we lack, uh.
I, I guess that's what I, I would ask.
Planning them all.
Do we want to change the schedule for next year? Do, do what we've done in the past is we've heard, we've sent you all the information. We've had a meeting to allow each of our partners to come in front of us. We've given you guys each a sheet, uh, for you to provide us your feedback individually. Then we submit it back to you with everybody's, and then we meet again to review it and make a decision. Do we need to add another day to that to come back and review all the information again, ask any additional questions? So add another day to that before you make a decision. Uh, we're interested in making this process what you guys want it, so we don't end up in this situation again where we're revisiting this, because it makes us, it really difficult for us to bring things to you guys in a timely manner and get the budget prepared. We're still doing great on time, and, and, but we've already met with our department heads, and, you know, we want to know what to expect as we meet with them. Do we need to be cutting in areas because we're spending more ad valorem taxes on our community partners? And that's difficult for us to, um, know what direction to bring information to you guys when we're making changes still.
Well, for me personally, it would be, I think what you're thinking, Derek, is I, I would like to see what their total budget is, and then what the amount we're contributing, what percent that is, what part of that is. How is that money impacting them? And then how does their organization impact the county? Because I think sometimes we may not have a clear indication of exactly what all their, just whether it's CASA or the Conservation District. What do they do to impact the county? I think that would help. Rather than maybe relying so much on a relay from you guys, but having somebody from them really spell it out to us. It may, it's gonna take more time, it's more time, but that's, we need to make a, a decision based on that.
And, and something that I would pledge to all of you, a- and I know you know this, um, a- and maybe we haven't talked about it. I mean, we have talked about it publicly, maybe not in specific detail, but Janet and I work hard. Um, I, I'm really every day, certainly every budget season, to make sure that our dollars are being spent as efficiently as possible. I mean, we've made difficult cuts in the sheriff's office, we've made difficult cuts out in recycling. We found efficiencies with, by using our county clerk as our finance officer. I mean, I, I, I could go on about the things that we're trying to do so that we can represent to our constituents, hey, we're doing everything we can with our tax dollars. But my fear is, the longer we do this, um, the less efficiencies we're gonna be able to find, because there is going to become a point where, you know, we're, we're just doing basically everything we can with the dollars that we have. And that point's got, I mean, Janet and I are just new enough at this, and you can't make every change at once, that it is gonna take some time, but we will get there, a- and I think you all know that we'll get there. And so, um, again, my hope is that our valuations continue to go up. Um, some of our, uh, companies out in the industrial park will be coming back on the books. Hopefully, Proximity Park down here is a success. I mean, there, there are reasons to be optimistic. But unfortunately, there may be a lean period until we get to that point. I can't predict when Proximity Park is gonna boom. Um, I think it will, but I don't know when. And so, um, I just want you to know, I want the Conservation District to know, I want the public to know, we're doing everything we can at the county to be efficient so that we don't have to make cuts to our partners. But it, it, we may very well get there at some point.
Frustrating thing is, you know, this, how we wish we would have done it, it's very similar to how we did it. Everybody come in, get a chance to explain what they're doing with the money, why they need it. We did all that. Uh, if we had more time, we spent three hours talking about it, and through consensus, at that point came to a decision about what we thought was the highest and best use of the dollars in front of us. Uh, the fact is, at the end of the day, it was an unpopular decision, so some of us wanna change our minds. I, I, I mean, uh, managing limited resources with seemingly unlimited, uh, need is inherently going to be unpopular. And I, I guess at some point, uh, you just have to, you know, use your best judgment, what's the highest and best use? Um, I, I guess it's frustrating that we're back here. Um, we did have a, uh, a process that worked, it's just, uh, not everybody was happy about it, so. I talk, but, uh, just as far as the property tax, I guess, uh, just to touch on that again, the, you know, I say we're up twenty percent over the last, uh, that's just the rate we charge. You talk about valuation, you know, it, the rate's twenty percent higher on, if you value on the house, the same house you may have owned for twenty years. Now, if the valuation goes up, that also raises your taxes. So I, I mean, uh, property taxes are just, I guess it's a...
Well, one thing.
I reiterate the motivating force that's driving me towards wanting to make these tough decisions.
Well, when we get the budget done, we'll see what the mill levy looks like, and when we get a chance to take a look at the mill levy, where we're gonna be at, then that helps us a little bit more understand what was gonna be coming out of it.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that's kind of the final step in our budget process. We review all of these dollar amounts, and that doesn't really, uh, doesn't really show itself to what we see at the end product. You know, it's not until we develop these dollar amounts that we wanna spend and apply that in all of our budget worksheets, and then apply our valuations to it, that we can truly see what our mill levy is. And, and by that time, we, um, we don't get those until June fifteenth, and we have to have a budget approved by the first week of August generally, to be able to, uh, get everything done according to state statutes. So we really are leaving ourselves about four weeks to really make some difficult decisions. Um, we hope that we can make those difficult decisions earlier so that we have a true picture of what our mill levy will look like when we get to that point, when we get those valuations. Uh, unfortunately, just because of the, the complexity of this process, that it just takes that much time to get the values from the appraisers and, and time to process all the property in the county and get that wrapped up into a neat little package that we can apply to the dollars that we want to spend on services.
Well, I think Colt's made that, uh, you know, we shouldn't look at the, the mill levy to drive the budget. The budget should drive itself based on what the need is. It's not about how much money we wanna spend or what we got to spend, that's not it.
Right.
We need to look and see what do we need to spend to provide the services that are really necessary.
Right.
And then not worry that, and hopefully, as you said, the, the dollar amount, the taxes could come down.
Right.
And, and to speak to the, the mill levy, and, and I think you probably know this, Colt, but some of it, I, I mean, there are so many factors that we can't control. I mean, I can't control the benefit cost to all of our employees and, and, uh, you know, equipment costs more for gym today than it did twenty years ago. You know, Ally talked about cuts from the state. Um, we're getting less from our federal fund exchange program. You know, Kins fighting battles with the state that involve funding. I mean, there are so many factors that I just wanna make sure it's said, these aren't arbitrary decisions to raise the mill levy. It's just to have any semblance of the services we used to provide. We literally have to, because everything around us is rising, and that's just, i- i- it's, it's, it's tough, I mean.
But I guess my point's more that we're on a rocket of rising taxes, and I guess that's just alarming trend. At some point, the ship needs to be righted, 'cause it, uh, can't go up forever. and I guess that's just alarming trend. At some point, the ship needs to be righted because it can't go up forever.
I feel like we have the opportunity, this, for this one, this isn't gonna affect the mill levy at all. And we can take care of all our community partners for two thousand nineteen at least. And then, who knows what the future brings, but this isn't something that's gonna raise it or do anything to it.
Well, this is, if we had savings, it, this specifically won't raise it, but to cover costs in other places, we may very well need this money that would have otherwise been a decrease in, in the property taxes. Cover that half million for employee benefits or, like I said, there's ample need. It comes down to what's the highest and best use.
Okay, well Derrick and Janet have presented us with an option and so we need to decide whether or not that's the option we wanna go with or not. Again, as you said, it's a pledge. It's basically an idea that says, hey, when you're doing the budget, we're okay with you trying to make the budget work by making this, that, so.
Yeah, and our TGT balance is, is healthy. And I've talked to, she's here, I've talked to the executive director of the Historical Society. She's, she's been fantastic to work with about this and she needs to be commended. And so, that portion of it, I have absolutely no heartburn about. This year, where we're at in eighteen, pledging those TGT funds for nineteen is not a problem at all. Roy?
Well, I feel, this is a good, good way to take care of the Conservation District this year. I feel like the people in my district are really supportive of the Conservation District and want the services continued. So I'll be supporting this, this move this year and looking, looking at the following years. I'll make that motion to use transfer, transient guest tax to Historical Society and, and move eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the Conservation District.
Second it.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes. Okay, then the next item then, consider for approval, making certain transient guest tax contributions to Franklin County Historical Society and to Franklin County Agricultural Society.
Yeah, some of this piggybacks directly on what we just talked about. And some of it goes back to our original community partners meeting. A prior administrator made the decision to supplement some of our community partners with TGT funds. And I believe the Ag Society, for example, last year got thirty-two-ten of TGT funding. And I forget, Janet did the Historical Society, what did they get in TGT?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. And so, what we're here to discuss today is, I guess, to recommend pledging the twelve thousand of TGT funds to the Historical Society that they received last year. An additional eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven, which would replace what we just gave to the Conservation District. And then they've also requested thirty thousand for the replacement of their HVAC system. And I would recommend discussing the Historical Society first. And we can make a motion to pledge that and then we can talk about the Ag Society.
Are we gonna talk about the replacement of the?
Well, yeah, and it might be helpful, I guess. Do you all, are you all, prior to making a motion, generally supportive of, or what is the level of support for the twelve thousand of TGT funds we did last year? And then the additional eleven-six-eighty-seven to replace the ad valorem? It might be easier to handle those as.
Those are supportive.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. I'd have more questions about the thirty thousand on that.
Yeah, and, and fair enough.
What's your opinion on the, can we sustainably provide? So the two of those together would be twenty-some thousand through TGT? I know we talk about it as a one-year deal, but if we pull it back out next year, then we have a hole to fill. Is it sustainable that we take twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars out of the TGT funds every year?
I, I don't know that it is Colt. I, I think it's easily done this year, but given-
Because we have a fund balance, but eventually you're gonna be pulling more out of that fund than you're putting in, so.
And, and really, we, Derrick and I reviewed the TG-T fund extensively in preparation for this discussion. And like you said, we do have a healthy balance in, in there, but that's because of the transitions that we've been making. Changes that we didn't foresee with, you know, trying to move to a different partner providing the services. So, we do have money in there that wasn't spent just because of the transition. And we're still, we're still trying to evaluate what the need truly is out there. We, as we've discussed in the past couple of weeks, we do have some needs to the building. We potentially have a need to put a septic tank out there. We have some real needs out there at, at our tourism building that's helping every single day to drive people into this community. This'll be, I believe, the third year that we've provided, if, if you guys make a motion to do so, that we've provided that twelve thousand dollars and I think that definitely is sustainable. This eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars is there. And we're hopeful with the new hotel coming on that, you know, that this is going to go up. But we do have a commitment to that hotel to give them some of that money back to help get them here to provide more fu- funds in the long run. So, this year, we, we have these funds there.
Yeah, using the funds for one-time capital expenditures makes more sense to me because as they're available, you can use it, you can delay or, you know, some of the capital expenditures, you can, you can move around as, as funds are available. But I think as the previous action we just took, you know, it's not sustainable to, to fund this much out of transient guest tax. And we'll essentially be digging ourselves a hole for the future that'll have to be filled in again with the property tax. I mean, there's no other funds that you could, you can't come up with to fill it in, so. It's kinda what I was talking about.
I do understand what you're saying, but I, in regards to the Historical Society receiving these funds, that is their mission to bring more people here to view the historic treasures that we have in Franklin County. So, yeah, it is, yeah.
I just don't think it's sustainable.
You have the average over the last several years, what we receive each year on transient guest tax? I know it's not a guarantee every year what it's gonna be, but for the five years I've been here, it's been a-
I, I don't have the average, but I do have what we received the last three years. In seventeen, we received a hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and three. In sixteen, we had some hotels that hadn't been paying previously that paid their back amount. So we had a sizable increase that year, which was two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, sorry. And then in fifteen, a hundred and eighty-four thousand and seven dollars.
What was that one, the last one?
One hundred and eighty-four thousand and seven dollars.
So it's been staying in the area of a hundred and eighty thousand and with another motel coming in, it should even go up, so.
Our commitment to that hotel, they won't allow, that our transient guest tax won't go below the base year, which I believe seventeen is the base year. So, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and three. If it goes below that, we won't have an obligation to pay them, but it could potentially go below that if it, you know, costs us stays in other hotels.
They only get a percent of what goes above two, is it a fifty-fifty or something?
They're revading half of it.
Half of it, above and beyond what we have been getting, okay.
And I think, yeah, it, it's just gonna be really interesting to see what effect that hotel has on, whether it costs other hotels stays. I mean, it certainly gives us more option for our big, like our car show, for example. I believe pretty strongly that it will pull in more traffic from thirty-five that would have otherwise just driven on up to Gardner or Olathe. So, there's reason to believe that it will increase our TGT funds even with the fifty percent kickback to them. But certainly, once the deal is up, I, I think it'll, it'll have a very strong influx.
Wanna spend that money before you've made it, essentially kite the check.
Well, I, I, I think anything that we're talking about beyond twenty nineteen is just conjecture anyway. We, we can't, we can't guarantee anybody anything beyond twenty nineteen. And so, the one-time, I, I see almost eleven thousand six eighty-seven as also a one-time because who knows where we're gonna be at when we get down that road anyway, but. And I'm okay with the thirty thousand one-time, I mean, you know, that, to do that, I-
Well, and, and that's, yeah, I mean, that's, again, it's a legal use. I do believe, I mean, you know, all of this together is, you know, a hit that we certainly couldn't sustain on an annual basis. But obviously, you know, the thirty thousand is for a replacement of an HVAC and then Colt, you'd know certainly better than me, maybe the rest of the board, what the life of a good HVAC system is. But, but that won't be an annual thing. I, yeah, I, there are not financial concerns from my vantage point with granting each of these three this year.
And the thirty thousand isn't a set number, is it? Have there been the bids taken and all that on this project?
I don't believe.
The thirty thousand is what we were advised to budget by Adam since others. At the time they came out to, like, to repair things last year. We had a serious conversation about what it would cost to redo the entire system at the museum. We have four units that cover that museum and they, they advised us to budget thirty thousand, but it is not a good. So, if you don't, to be exact, how much it would cost, that's what they advised us.
And, and again, none of this is etched in stone. We could, I could work with her, we could hold off on this. We could work, get three bids, however many bids, and get an exact amount and come back and pledge that. I mean, obviously, the communication is good, so it won't, you know, I'm happy to do that. If you just wanna discuss the other funding today, that, that might be the better way to do it frankly.
It's not like we have to budget the thirty thousand today or something. It's in, in there, if we need it, then we'll use it, so.
That, we're not through our budget process and that money's not gonna go anywhere, so.
So what you're asking for now is to motion to approve making certain transient guest tax contributions to Franklin County Historical Society?
Well, I, I think the motion, if you all are inclined to make it, would be to pledge twenty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars of TGT funding to the Historical Society pending approval of the twenty nineteen budget. And then we would circle back around and I, I would work with the Historical Society on the HVAC system.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes. Okay, then we wanna do Derrick, the County Agriculture Society.
Yes, and Janet and I spoke about this yesterday and I'm not sure either of us know the board's intention. So, this year, the board tentatively elected to lower the ad valorem contribution to the Ag Society by four thousand dollars. And what we were unsure of was whether or not it was the board's intention to supplement that with TGT funds because this is our other community partner that is eligible to receive TGT funds given that they run the fair and the fair brings people into the community, or at least in theory. And so, we funded them with thirty-two-ten of TGT funding last year. And then the question, I guess this year, is do you wanna fund them that amount again? Do you wanna fund them seventy-two-ten, which I believe would meet their budget request? But it would be an additional four thousand dollars in TGT funds. And, and the same exact discussion can apply to them as, as the Historical Society. Long-term, there are certainly are questions about sustainability. However, in nineteen, this can be done.
Seems like we're blowing our savings account so we can make a tough decision next year.
And I'll be honest with you, I don't recall what I had originally put down, whether I was considering, you know, transferring the four thousand additional so that it wasn't a loss or if I was thinking of just cutting it to four thousand. I, I, I just don't recall how I was thinking at that time and what my intent was, so I don't have that in front of me. I know they were very good about listing what their projects were. You know, and I know they had some insurance money back for a building and some stuff like that. I, I don't recall that.
Well, I've had an issue with this over the last couple of years because I felt that they were not really making any effort to help out, raise money. Their facilities set a lot of the time that they could be using them to make money than help with it. I felt like they weren't really doing any of that. They were just coming to us every year and asking for a raise in, in what we give them. I think they have some new leadership now out there. The gentleman came and talked to us, seemed like he had a lot of good ideas and so forth. So I think it was gonna hopefully get better on their side of it. Like I said, I haven't seen a lot of effort to help, you know, themselves, in my opinion. Plus, I haven't really seen over the years, last several years, that I feel like the fair has really grown or added new things. It's kinda the same thing every year and whether it's, needs to get some new stuff in there or whatever, if it's gonna start making more money instead of losing, so. I have a little problem with this one.
I believe Mr. Livingston talked to you guys about some changes they have on, on the plan for this year. Changes to activities to try to draw more people in this year. So, I, I think you're right, they do have some new people and they're trying to make some changes and, and do some new stuff, have some more activities throughout the year there at the fairgrounds, so.
Roy, you have any thoughts?
I'm kinda with Rick there. A little concerned about how, how their activities are, are producing income for them instead of losing money. I know they're changing their venues, they're changing their rodeos and things, trying to not lose money and. I think this, this one, I had a little concern about is, is the Ag Society.
Sounds like the consensus may be to leave the thirty-two-ten intact and not add the four thousand. That's kinda what, sounds, that's what I hear in any way.
Well, then the motion would be to pledge thirty-two-ten of TGT funding to the Ag Society pending approval of the twenty nineteen budget.
Be my motion?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair of a note.
Yes. Okay, next item is to consider approval holding a public hearing to vacate the Rock Creek Road between Louisiana and Eisenhower.
Good morning Commissioners. The department received a request from the property owners adjacent to Rock Creek Road between Louisiana and Eisenhower. In order to vacate the road, it's necessary to hold a public hearing. I would suggest Mr. Chairman to open the public hearing.
Okay, do we need a motion to do that or just a? Okay, gentlemen, I look for a motion then to open a hearing on, to vacate the road between Louisiana and Eisenhower.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the hearing is now open. Okay, the hearing is now open. Comments?
Solicited comments.
Any public comment that someone would like to make on the road? Sunny, come on up and state your name and address if you would please.
Sunny Birch, uh thirty-five seventy-eight Labette Terrace, Ottawa. Uh I've owned this property here. I'm representing three owners. I own the north side of this mile section of minimum date maintenance road that is a dirt road. And Billy Harris or Rodney Billy Harris owns some of this on the other side. And Larry and Jane Med- uh Majors, I couldn't think of that. They own the other part and we're all in favor of getting this thing closed. I tell you, it's become a ca- uh dumping ground for trash and tires and batteries and all of this.
Well, it sounds like it'd benefit the landowners and benefit the county as well, so.
Plus, it's been a problem of uh everybody out there mudding their roads and so.
Okay.
We'd like to get this closed.
Closing this doesn't cause any issues for any other landowners, does it?
We're the only three owners.
And it's, is it a mile road?
Yes, sir.
And no houses on the road, you said?
No, sir.
At minimum maintenance, I'm assuming the school districts don't use it or anyone else and not a good road to be down, so just nothing but trouble anyway.
It's parallel to a paved old highway.
It does. Would you gate it off if?
Yes, we're gonna put the gates on the Eisenhower route, I am, and they're gonna put it on the other Louisiana side, so.
Yeah, now normally when we do these, um and we've done them before, my questions have to do with, you know, future easements and making sure that all landowners have access to their parcels. In this instance, that is not, it's not a concern. Um we've got the support of the landowners. And I don't have any concerns with vacating this particular piece of land.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Any other questions for this? Okay. Any other one? If not, then I make a.
Nope. We gotta make a motion to close.
Close the hearing, right? That's what it is.
Jim might give a staff report, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion. Second.
Okay, everybody in favor of that closing the hearing?
Yes.
Yes, alright.
I've prepared for your consideration resolution. Vacating a portion of Rock Creek Road between Louisiana Road and Eisenhower Road in its entirety from the east right away line of Louisiana to the west right away line of Eisenhower. I don't have a number.
I believe it's nineteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Okay, so are you looking for a number?
Nineteen.
I'm sorry?
Eighteen, nineteen.
Eighteen, nineteen? Okay, so a motion, uh resolution number eighteen, nineteen, to vacate a portion of Rock Creek Road between Louisiana and Eisenhower Road as described, okay.
Make that motion.
Alright.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair of note.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Consider that done, Mr. Birch. Consider yourself okay. Alright, um staff reports.
As I mentioned, um we had our budget meetings um all day Monday and all day yesterday. Met with all of our department heads and elected officials. Um it went incredibly well. Um I am very pleased with, uh certainly pleased with all of my department heads um and all of the elected officials. We had several uh meetings wherein we discussed the uh necessity of staying flat. And by and large, we've done so. I mean, you're gonna have some requests come to you in the next uh couple of months, but it's not gonna be a ton and most of the increase can be directly attributed to our pay plan and and my desire to continue with that. And and we've talked about this before, but that certainly um that is, you have to have, you have to be looking outside of the year-to-year on that. I mean, that is one where I I believe taking care of your employees now saves you money down the road. And so while it does cost money to pay our people, I think keeping them and eliminating turnover leads to a much more efficient and ultimately cheaper organization down the line. So by and large, that uh that will be what comes to you in the way of increases. And there will be, you know, maybe a handful of others that are appreciable, but uh very pleased this year, so.
Have Gayla, or the, you or anyone else discussed different insurance carrier?
We, we have, and I'll tell you that, what I've learned, so our contract with the state is up this year. It's our intention to renew with the state again. Um and I know Gayla and I both are reluctant to do that, but that, that is such a massive, massive decision. That is one, very rarely do I support bringing in consultants to do things that we can do ourselves. I think a lot of governments get taken by these consulting firms, oh, pay us fifty thousand dollars and we're gonna tell you how much your people ought to make. Like I, I think a lot of that's a waste. But in this instance, that is such a volatile, complex market. I think we're gonna need to bring somebody in to help us assess what our options are because the concern is, I think any company can come in and give us a great rate for year one, but then they get a year's worth of our claims history and that's when, you know, all heck can break loose potentially. And so uh we are working on that. I think, I think it's something that's gonna take years. I mean, I think we could look into that, so my intention is to start doing that now. I mean, you could have a consultant in front of you or we could be in front of you recommending that in the next month or two. And we start that process so that after our next contract with the state is up, we're in a position to to really potentially jump on something else. Because the last thing I wanna do is make a change that might result in savings year one. But if the product is inferior and ultimately the prices get jacked, like that, that's not something that I I want this board to have its name on, so we're gonna make sure we do.
Well, I think all of us and you two also, when you meet with your groups of people, you know, hey, how are you guys handling it in your county? What are you doing? And really maybe find, but you're right, you'll get lowballed definitely and then you can't control the rates down the road and you don't know what you're gonna get.
We've had lots of discussions at my clerk meetings about this and I've tried to keep Gayla and Joanne apprised of what the conversation is and even forward them a lot of those emails so they can see what um what's being talked about because a lot, a mo- a lot of counties don't have um dedicated HR staff just because they don't have the number of employees that we have. So I try to, when my fellow clerks who do HR are involved in those discussions, I make sure that Joanne and Gayla know about those and involve them in the conversation. Forward them contacts of people that are are being helpful to other counties. Um and also, um Gayla has been in contact with some neighboring counties to find out what they're doing and even have met with some of their reps to um, you know, to discuss their plan in detail. Um like Derek said, you know, Gayla is, is, and Joanne both are on this and they have acknowledged that this is going to be a long-term project to bring back a product that's, that's usable for our employees and sustainable by, you know, this governing body.
I wish we were in position, uh better position for this next year, but our transition between administrators, like there's just been enough going on in the county that that we, we weren't able to get on it soon enough for this.
Well, it sounds like already you've made the inroads and Gayla, you know, doing that, so that's, that's all you can do. And uh yeah, it's not some decision you just wanna make real lightly because that's repercussions are great. Okay. Well, let's uh. Jim, anything else?
Dust control started yet, ad vacation started yesterday.
Okay.
It was canceled for today because of the rain.
Okay.
Anticipated begin again tomorrow.
Alright, Janet? Uh Commissioners, comments, board reports?
I don't have any. I've also not attended anything since last we met, but I did talk to Derek's grandma yesterday and I promised her, I gave her my word that I would remind him that she hasn't moved, she still lives in the same house. And that he's welcome to come over anytime.
I think that's very appropriate. Uh I I think uh, I think Mark in in his implication made some comment about, you know, making somebody's day better, you know, making, doing something to make somebody's day better, so.
She watches sometimes, so.
Yeah, I bet you got. Roy?
Yeah, I got an email from uh Pat Vining of the Richmond Museum and she's uh really appreciative of Roy Baker making some maps, old maps for the museum. And this Sunday, they got a, a meeting at one o'clock and then at two o'clock, they got a professor from Haskell College in Lawrence to come down and talk about indigenous people in the area. And she invited uh anybody and everybody to come down to Richmond to see the museum. And next week is a KCCA conference in Wichita. I'll be going to that, so I'll be at the meeting on the second.
Today is walk during your lunch day, so put an umbrella on and.
There is an event down at at Old Depot Museum um at noon. Is it noon or eleven forty-five? Eleven forty-five, okay. To, so come out and join us. I've, we've got a couple from my office that are planning on being there, so.
Okay, uh Derek has asked for fifteen-minute executive session, a ti- attorney-client privilege. Uh if I could get somebody.
The motion would need to read um an executive session to discuss a pending legal matter uh pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception to the Open Meetings Act for fifteen minutes with the board and the counselor.
Everybody wanna make that motion?
Motion to that effect? Second.
Alright, we got a motion second going, second session, fifteen minutes. That would put us out at nine, ten? Seven? Okay, all, everybody in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Okay, it's ten oh seven. We are out of executive session. No action taken. Any other comments from Commissioners? If not, Derek, nothing else, we'll go to uh adjournment. You're good with that?
I have nothing else.
Okay, a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.